The ArmelD office at 230 Ash Street for distribution to the community TV stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington and Linfield. The Board recognizes the importance of hearing public comment, the discretion of the Chair on items on the agenda as well as not on the agenda. I just ask that all parties, Dirk, comments to the Chair? And please also just state your name and address and ideally come up to the mic so everybody can hear you out in TV land. So with that, I think we'll fill you okay to be Board Secretary tonight.
Yes, who we're in the mark.
And it looks like Karen-
Why does he get to be Secretary?
Um, I don't know. He's very, he's very good at it. We have from the Reading Select Board Vanessa Alvarado, Mark Doxer, welcome to the meeting. We don't have FinCom rep, but I think, oh, sorry Sean, I probably, we do. I don't think I mentioned, maybe I have. Sean what?
Jacob.
Sean Jacobs from FinCom, thank you for coming.
Very good.
So with that, we can go to public comment. ArmelD cab, do you have any, George, do you have any, any comments?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. And so I think we're ready for public comment then. Mr. Doxer?
Come on up to the mic.
This may render the item five moot, I suspect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, folks. Mark Doxer, 110 Beaver Road, member of the Reading Select Board as well. I wanted to come and speak with you folks this evening. I have some sort of notes in front of me, I'll probably add them from there as well, but the Select Board had a meeting on the 21st of January and reviewed some of the discussions surrounding the payment. And my Board members had hoped that our Boards or Subcommittee would have met to talk a little bit more about it and use the word, they were a little disappointed that we all haven't met. And I don't, I'm not pointing that at you, I'm pointing at kind of us because we haven't made that happen and I think it's something we should, we would like to do. The Select Board kind of had a discussion where we were discussing, how has this been going on in the past? How might we take it going forward? I've been attending some of the meetings, Vanessa's been attending some of the meetings and we've talked a little bit about the process to date and wanted to talk a little bit more about how that, how we'd like to approach you about doing that. So we felt that, you know, the ArmelD obviously is part of Reading and the town and ArmelD staffs and boards should be working together more collaboratively. And I think that was one of the outcomes of that discussion. Specific to the payment, we believe the best approach is to talk together before any decisions are made. And as part of the discussion, clearly we need to agree on a change factor in the earnings payout, as was discussed with the two-year kind of hiatus in changes. It's well-established and it's a part of the fabric of the relationship that there has been this earnings payout and some kind of a change factor that gets assessed with it all. So that's in the 70-year history and certainly the last 20-plus, that's certainly been a very clear aspect of how it's been done. And I think as we're thinking about it, or certainly as the Board was talking about it, we're thinking less of the pilot that's going to all of the towns and a little bit more about what I'm going to call the earnings distribution to the town of Reading. Some strong concerns got raised at our meeting. The Town Manager, Superintendent of Schools expressed concerns about one of the options that is on the list right now that would result in a substantial decrease in both short-term and long-term payments to the town, decreases from historical levels. As you know, the town and school budgets are built around planned revenues and a cut in the order of several hundred thousand dollars would wreak havoc and require cuts even in the fiscal '21 budget. And the fiscal '21 budget is being discussed and built as we speak. It actually is going to be going to Town Meeting in April. So there's a lot of work going to the Finance Committee first and then it's going to go to Town Meeting in April. To say that this has raised alarm bells would be a bit of an understatement. We're very concerned and as we looked at that option one, in our view, it's not a reasonable option in process or in impact. It could really wreak havoc on things. I know that there was a study that was done by Energy New England, in fact, I was here, I think, for that meeting. And one of the things that I took from that, there are certainly there are issues with it, I think we can all talk about that, but one of the things I decided to look at was utilities that are paying over a million dollars to their communities. And in the study that was shared, there are six of them. They had an average payment of 4.4% of revenue and ArmelD by that calculation is at 4.3. Point here is simply that we should work together to find an acceptable adjustment factor. In our view, the current proposals, we appreciate that there is more than one proposal, but they don't fully reflect the needs of the town. We think that one or more additional options should be on the table for discussion, which would change the adjustment factor in perhaps a different method. And I think that's what was discussed when the two-year payment freeze was agreed upon. One of the areas that was also touched upon, and I don't know that it's necessarily related to the payment specifically, but it was a discussion about the need for capital, increased capital funding and improvements. And one of the things that is a real advantage that the town of Reading brings to the Board is the ability to raise debt if so desired and at pretty incredible rates. On Tuesday night, I actually signed the forms, we all signed the forms, the town raised $6 million at 1.06% interest, which is amazing, certainly much better than government. And, you know, funds that are put into a bank account at this point would be earning more than that. So it's a facility that's part of our relationship. And the reason I bring it up only is that as capital needs exist, there may be benefits that are available where the town has some expertise and opportunity. And that's part of, I think, what the relationships should include. It does by law and it does by desire. So just to kind of summarize and move things along, to move the process forward, the Select Board would welcome a meeting between the two Boards, either formally or in a smaller group, to continue the discussion before any of the proposals are voted on. The Board allowed me to come forward today to speak for the Board, obviously not to bind in any way because we have to have public meetings to do that, but to kind of express a desire to find a way to kind of sit down together and work this through, see what other options may exist and to find a solution that's going to work here. So I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mark. Did you have anything, Dad? Vanessa? Okay. If you want us to stay, there's one thing I would like to say about, just to explain why we had what we had on the January agenda. You know, last year, we, a study was commissioned by ArmelD and when it came out in November, it was released to us and to the Citizens Advisory, the CAB. Okay? So now they have this document, everybody has this document with a set of recommendations in it. It was the only sort of piece of paper we had with a recommendation on it at that point. And, you know, it is what it is. I was as shocked, you know, as you and I, you know, I think Colleen and Wendy, you know, also sat down and instead of having that be the only thing on the table as of November, and I know you were present at that meeting and saw that slide in November, that in January we said, okay, here's, we're going to make sure we start with three options. And I think we said at the meeting that it's a start of here are some options and not just that one, but here are some that have been recommended by staff. We'd also welcome your input and we said that at the meeting and we say it again tonight. So if it's, you know, if it's a joint meeting, you can do a joint, I'm happy to do a call a joint meeting, speaking for myself as Chair.
If I may make a comment?
And that's, so yeah.
I would comment too, as Chair.
So why don't we start with John?
Yeah. We share your concerns, I mean, we have for two years. This is not something that's just happened, Mark, you know that. We've been working on this, we've been dealt with a fact base, we've been doing this. And quite frankly, and I've said it before, I'll say it again in every meeting, before Colleen got here, our General Manager, the ArmelD was mismanaged. You didn't maintain, the town didn't maintain the integrity of the system and the reliability of the system, which backs up into poles failing, transformers failing, so many things, like eight-plus million dollars' worth, that all of a sudden we were faced with the lights going out for all of our ratepayers and our citizens. And then, so we're caught between these two rocks, right? I mean, in terms of trying to give the town as much money as we possibly can because we're all, except for George over here, we're all Reading people, we're all members of this, this Board and we want to do the right thing for Reading, but we serve four towns. So we've got to maintain the four-town perspective and the bulk of the power comes from that gentleman's territory over there. It's not just Reading. So together, we're very, very strong as a combined entity in purchasing power, it gives us tremendous leverage in being able to do that. And for what Chuck has done, and if you've attended any of his presentations, it's been absolutely stunning what they've been able to do in terms of purchase power and actually being able to sell power back to other individuals because we're so good at it. So we've honed this and we've tried to make it a really professionally-run organization and it's come to light through all of the facts over the last couple of years that we just can't dodge this bullet. We need to get this thing out there and get it done in terms of the maintenance. Once the maintenance is all done and once we get over that hill, opens up a whole new wealth of other opportunities and things we might be able to do for the town. So I just wanted to state that, that it wasn't like an overnight kind of, we decided to do this. We have a duty to the four towns, not just to Reading, to be able to make sure that the maintenance is maintained and we're doing the right thing. And that's a big price tag unfortunately. And it's unfortunate we kind of got to this point in time, but no, I mean, Reading has had its own issues from an economic perspective before you two were sitting on the Board. I mean, I've been here in Reading for what, 45 years now, and I've seen multiple economic issues that have arisen that should never have arisen in the organization. So everybody's to blame at some point, you know, for kind of with the economic situation we've gotten into. So in any event, we pay Reading more than any other municipal in the entire system in Massachusetts, correct me if I'm wrong? And it's a significant amount more than, what's the next nearest one?
I don't know. It would have to be as a function of load or customers and you would be correct, yeah.
In terms of just millions of dollars. I mean, and it happened because of a formula that was put in place many, many years ago that didn't reflect the fact that we weren't maintaining the system, at least not the way that it should have been maintained. So we're not doing this just because, you know, we're angry with the town or angry with you guys or wanting to go and flex muscle or anything. It has nothing to do with it. It's about the facts of the system, that to be an electrical utility, you've got to have power on the system and if it's not there and it blows something up, then you're liable and people get very upset. I mean, look at PG&E, we don't have to go too far there, or we can look at Columbia Gas, which happened. Everybody said that couldn't happen. It did happen. We don't want it to happen in our four town and we need an immediate answer to that from a maintenance perspective. And that's what we're addressing. That's really what it's, what it's pretty much all about. As far as the bond issue, I mean, I don't know how the other members of the Commission feel, but if, I believe that if we can do it with our own cash and self-fund it, that's the way we ought to do it because we've got cash, we want to do that. And if the town wishes to use or to raise debt for their, whether it's schools or buildings or whatever it may be, that's great. I, that's wonderful. But as far as this Commission is concerned, or at least my personal opinion, it's much better to be self-funding if we can possibly do that. And that's what I would really certainly like to see. So I'm sorry, I've been taking a lot of time in terms of answering you. I'd be more than happy to meet Board to Board, absolutely. The reason we don't, the real part of the reason we abolished the Subcommittee was because it was totally dysfunctional. Members of the Select Board came over and I'll be very blunt, demanded, demanded what they wanted and got up and left the room.
Vanessa, come up to the, please come up to the, yes, yeah, thank you. Happy to have the dialogue.
Vanessa Alvarado, Select Board. So I think, I mean, at this point, Mark and I are here, we are hopeful to move the discussion forward in order to consider an arrangement and a formula that takes into consideration the needs, as you've meant, the capital needs, as you've mentioned, John, of the Commissioners and ArmelD as well as the needs of the town. So whether, as Mark mentioned, that's a joint meeting of the full Boards or whether it's a subgroup of some kind, then that's fine, either with Wendy, Colleen, Bob and Sharon, et cetera, if that's appropriate. And we can certainly talk about that offline, we would certainly be open to that. But I think, you know, the past is the past, previous Boards are previous Boards, but we're here now and we would certainly welcome working with all of you.
Likewise.
Please, yeah, without leaving the-
We're all looking forward, we really are. I mean, I hate to leave the rear of the pack, but it got us where we are.
And I just, I do think speed is, I think speed is of the essence. I think it's, it's good. We, 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 we have three years that this has been in the ether and, and yes, you can speak in a minute, but I just think we should, let's, let's, let's do it, you know, let's get it done in the next, as soon as possible.
I think we should start the conversations and then see-
We've had, my only point is there's been three years of conversations. So, you know, at some point we need to move all, you know, we're, we're, it's not as complicated as, it's not that complicated to get this done.
And I think if we can get in the same room, then that would be-
Yeah, well, I know, you guys were on a two-person committee for the last few months, right? I mean, yeah, not anymore. I mean, it's one of those, I mean, to your, to the point of like forming committees, it's like you formed a two-person committee about payment to the town of Reading, it's just another, you know, what are we doing here? So we have some things, let's get, let's get feedback, let's, let's tweak them as needed as if we all agree and, and do it. Let's move forward. So yes, I would love to call a joint meeting. Phil?
Yeah, so I just want to remind everybody that, you know, when I first came on the Board here, Wilmington had taken two votes to withdraw from the system. So we may talk about the Commission meeting with the Selectmen, but there's a third party involved here. And that's, you know, right now, we have the options out to the CAB for their input. I don't know, you know, when that, you know, when, when that input will come back, but there's a third party involved here, you know? I lived through the, I lived through the withdrawals. There would be no winners if any of the towns were to withdraw from the system. There were no winners in that case, was the analysis. And I think that's still true today, you know, and if we have to, you know, we, we need to, I'm more than happy to meet, but I just want to make the point that there's a third party that also should be part of, part of this, this discussion.
And I don't think any of us, none of us, right, except you, were, were kind of in the, in the mix at that point, right? You're the only one. Do you want to, I mean, you brought it up, so what happened?
Still, I'm curi-, if I may.
Yeah.
Phil, I'm curious, how long, how long have you served on the Commissioners?
What?
How long have you been a Commissioner?
How long have I been a Commissioner? I'm in my 33rd year.
So this, this, that's what that's called, is institutional memory. Okay? So why don't you just give the brief recap of what happened if with the-
So basically, when I came on the Commission, there was an issue with the town of Wilmington. The town of Wilmington had basically, you know, taken votes to withdraw from the, from the district.
On what basis?
On the basis that they were unhappy with, with what was going on down there. They felt that everything was being operated for the benefit of Reading and not for the benefit of the outside towns.
Okay.
That was the feeling. So the Town Meeting took a vote.
To do what?
Took two votes to withdraw from the district.
Wilmington?
Wilmington did.
So Wilmington Town Meeting got exercised and Wilmington Town Meeting did two, not one, but two votes.
Right.
What, does that have to be a year apart?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact period.
Would that also coincide during the time of mismanagement?
Of what?
No, no.
Of ArmelD.
Is that word?
You had mentioned, John had mentioned the mismanagement that preceded-
No, 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 this is like before that.
This is two administrations before that.
Yeah.
Norm Ryerson was the man, was the manager when I first came here.
So was the issue was the payment to the town of Reading?
Payment to the town of Reading, plus there was some issues with street lighting, the fact that the, they didn't feel that, you know, there was no representation, you know, it was a taxation without representation issue too and that. And so basically what Len Rucker, who was the manager at the time, and myself, we negotiated with two Selectmen from the town of North Reading, Bob Kane-
North Reading or Wilmington?
Jim Stewart, Wilmington, Wilmington. And came up with a 20-year agreement, which created the CAB, you know, in terms of that created the above-the-line payment. We had to go and get legislation from the State House.
Right.
I remember going to the State House and they were, they were-
That's, that's why there's an above-the-line payment because of that special legislation.
We were on the same agenda as the racing bill and we're looking at the room, what are all these people doing here?
And then the below-the-line, of course, is the voluntary discretionary one and it started at 1.5 million, what, 20 years ago, and now it's 2.5 million.
But you also have to remember that, you know, there was also a lawsuit. So if you hear, if you hear the term 85-121, and Colleen can explain that, you know, we're, in terms of our bottom-line number, we're limited to what the net, net plant is, not the gross, which it was before that.
The only other, and I'd like to just add one perspective there, which is that, that Reading's the only system that has this situation where most of the, most of the customers and load are not in the municipality that has the light plant. There are others that have some other territory, you know, PBD has South Linfield, that's a, you know, very small part of their thing. I think Taunton has Rainham and Berkeley, the whole towns are just part of them. But you know, Taunton's a city and then it has these small towns and there might be a little bit here and there where there's a little bit of a boundary, but I think that's it. So we're like a total outlier, but let me just, so I just want to get why that, why this is not a straightforward, let's, let's sit down and, you know, negotiate with you or it's, it's not that simple. I mean, it, it just isn't, you know? We wish it were so, but that's why, anyway.
So.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Phil, thank you for the background. I think, I, I realize we've inadvertently hijacked your public comment.
It's fine. I mean, we need to have the conversation and you're here, so let's have it.
But we are glad to hear that you'd be willing to meet with us and we would look forward to that. And so Dave, Chair to Chair, we can plan something for the future, near future?
That would be great, very near.
As a, as a preliminary conversation.
Yes, and also just to be clear, as of tonight, there's not, there's not, there has not been a suggestion or a request from the Select Board or from Town Staff about something that you would like to see done or feedback, right? There's, and there's not a, an idea that you've put forward at this point, correct?
We have not put our own proposals forward, no, because we had been hoping to go into it as a conversation.
Okay. Well, we have had a year since it's been frozen, so it's not that much of a surprise that this issue is hanging out there and it's, it ends at the end of this calendar year with nothing. So that, that can't be a surprise. So, you know, we've done what we've done, we're trying here, so. Yeah, Tom?
Yeah, so, I mean, a lot has been said, I guess I agree with collaboration, I think that's a foundation of success, but I, I think it's going to involve an understa-, really understanding positions on both sides. So three of the five of us are Town Meeting members, I've lived in Reading 40 years, you've lived, I mean, so we, we understand and I think, I speak for most of, we, we support Reading as a town and we've lived here, so that's a given. I think what has been missed, not by people in this room particularly, but this all got started, because I was at Town Meeting, by a perception that, and the word was used, ATM machine, that this place was coining money and-
The ATM on Ashville.
And it began, for those who remember, frankly, as a desire to increase the payment, which focused us on a reality that I don't think we had been focused on because the previous 20-year agreement is basically an annuity, right? It's tied to CPI and it goes up every year, has gone up every year and would continue to go up every year under that formula regardless of whether we ended zero revenue. I mean, that's, there was no, which isn't the way you can run a business, right? It has to be tied to economic reality. So that was one issue. The other thing, you've all seen the financials, it's an open book here, as it is for town. So the revenues are flat and actually declining, I think they've been declining the last three years. So, and that's a byproduct, a terrible byproduct of the cost efficiencies that we're doing, right? With solar, with all the programs we're doing, it's cheaper, right? And, but that doesn't pay us anymore, so we're, we're making less money, so to speak. And we do have significant infrastructure costs, I will say, they've been addressed responsibly under Colleen and her team and we see, we see the byproduct of that in the, in the rates, right? Very favorable rates and not only enviable rates in the four towns, but also enviable service level. So I think those are the realities. So, so part of the discussion needs to be, there's wants and needs. So we have an obligation as Town, ArmelD Commissioners to do its best for the survival of this because the only way we can increase revenue, as you know, is to increase rates. So that's not a, that's not a win-win for anybody, right? We can increase the town payment and then we, we, we pay more in rate. So this is going to require some ingenuity, it's going to require some understanding, you know, with people working together, I believe you can come up with some innovative solutions. But it, it's a challenge because there are things, we have to invest in the infrastructure, we have to also serve four towns and, you know, Reading is not the most significant part of our revenue base because of the number of industries. So we have to recognize that and so there's a fairness issue. So all of these things need to be factored in and, you know, I, I think that we just have to have tempered expectations knowing that we aren't an ATM machine and that we have to manage responsibly and, you know, just find a way to do this. We have been very painfully aware of the situation. I've served on override committees, so I, I get it. So I would just say in, in our discussions, we need to walk in each other's shoes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much both. Please, please stay, we have other interesting items on the agenda.
Want to wash the paint dry?
Phil would like to correct something.
Just one correction from what Mr., oh, Mr. Rock said. The, the payment to the town, the pilot program is not part of the 20-year agreement. That is not part of the 20-year-
It's just the above-the-line.
The above-the-line is not part of the 20-year agreement. The pilot program is not part of the 20-year agreement.
Yeah, but I mean-
It's a recommendation, but it's not part of the-
Right, but I mean, at the end of the day, we're, we're talking about a pot of money, right? Doesn't really matter which pot, does it particularly?
Yes, yes. I just want everybody to go away thinking it's part of the 20-year agreement, okay?
Our next agenda item is payment to the town of Reading. So I think we can move on from that.
Kick that tire.
We did.
Good segue.
But, you know, we have, we do, anyway. So Colleen, your report, please.
Thanks.
Hi, Mark. Thanks, boy.
I have a couple of project updates that I wanted to give you on that and then as part of my report, I might ask Chuck to talk about a couple of the community things that are happening and then we can, and then we can move on. So very quickly, just to let you know what's, what's going on with, with the roof at, at this building. This product that we had talked about being installed, we need five days of dry surface non-frost, so it's been pushed off a little bit. We're expecting that once we get that, they do two 10-foot patches, they let it dry, they do a pole test, if it adheres properly, they'll be able to lay it in. We're just waiting for that between five and seven days. So it's a little bit of a hiccup with the, with the vendor wanting to, to find the right day so we get a good seal. The deck repair, as you know from the past, the OSHA condemned the deck and so we demolished the deck at the end of 2019. We're just pouring a foundation so that you can walk out. It's not going to be a deck anymore. Once that foundation is poured, they'll measure the steel railings, the steel railings take eight to 10 weeks and then it's just going to be a flat, like a, not a paved area, but just an area, we'll put some tables out there, whatever, but nothing fancy, the whole deck and wood, everything's gone. So that should be done before April. The concrete is actually being poured January 28th. The customer parking lot, I know that's something that we all wanted to have done. That unfortunately what happens is because of the December, we had a couple of snowstorms early, the asphalt plant shut down. My understanding is they typically come back up mid-March. As soon as the asphalt, we'll get our occupancy permit and they can, they can put the lines. I was hoping that they would put the lines down on the, on the, the coat that's out there, just to at least start getting it open, but apparently there's an occupancy permit that's related to that. It is going to be nice when it's done, we'll have a couple of benches, we'll have the evening charges and hopefully that'll be a, a nice place that people from the public can come and, and charge their new electric vehicles. So that's the update on that. We apologize to everyone for their inconvenience of parking, but we are working to try to get that done and I think it'll be, it'll be worth it. The last one is the generator project, our emergency generator that services all of these buildings and all of our systems. Backups failed. They were digging on Monday and they hit a unexpected foundation that was associated with an old chimney from the production plant.
Wow.
So instead of removing like eight inches of concrete, it ended up being 18 inches of concrete, so there's a little bit of a delay in that. And then they'll pour the new pad. So yeah, there was a big chimney there and I guess they just poured the concrete pad and then stuck the old generator on it. So when you, we're putting the new footings in, we kind of ran into that. So those are kind of the updates on the four larger projects that are happening on this campus, so that everybody is, is aware of that. Nextera Energy, the, the Public Power Summit, um, I've gone down the last couple of years, just for a couple of days. Actually, you guys gave me permission, but I didn't actually put in for it, it was more of a, um, a learning thing for myself. Uh, I may put in for it this time, because I've been asked to be a speaker on, um, microgrids because of the ACIS million-dollar grant we got on our battery. The rest of the country is very interested in, in what New England is doing, because we are so unique in our pricing and things like that compared to the rest of the country. Uh, so I'm proud to be able to represent the RMLD in that, in that talk and usually there'll be some little video clip that I can share when I get back. But it's just a, it's a couple of day, uh, trip, so it's, it's nothing, um, it's nothing big. But anything that I learn from that, I will, I will bring back. So I'll need, uh, authorization to do that.
Certainly, please, Phil.
Okay. Move that the, uh, RMLD Board of Commissioners approve Ms. O'Brien's travel to in attendance at the Nextera Energy Marketing Public Power Summit in Malapen, if I pronounced that right, Florida, from February second through February fifth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
In favor? Yep, that's all against, I think that's a five oh vote in favor of the motion.
Uh, the next one is the APPA Legislative Rally, where I usually go down to Washington and represent, uh, the RMLD with NEPA. I can request approval for that, but I actually have too much on my plate, so I'm probably not gonna go. I have other, uh, commitments and, and meetings at that time, so. Is it okay if I s- say I, I'm not requesting permission at this?
No, you must go.
I just got too many meetings and stuff going at that time. Chuck, are you planning on going? You are not, okay. So, we, we will have other representation for this area and so I will still provide a presentation when we get back, but I will tell you what. We typically pick a couple of topics, 'cause when you go in and you meet with the legislators, you only got a couple of minutes to go in. So I will let you know what those are and if you have any comments, I can pass them along to Energy New England and some of the other systems that might be going.
Should we stood to the motion in case something happens and you can, you can go?
So, uh, maybe you've already explored this, so it's, it sounds like it's always very worthwhile for you to go. Is, is there anyone else on the senior staff that would, it would benefit to be there in terms of representing RMLD?
Yeah, it's possible, I, I'm just hearing from Chuck, I can, I can ask, um, uh, who he thinks might be appropriate to go, or maybe it might be time for Hamid to, as a successor, potential successor, to go down and learn what it's like.
He's important to have representation. So maybe we could approve the sending of a person?
Well, I don't think we need to.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
We don't need to approve, that's, that's terrible, you know, that's the manager's jurisdiction. We don't need, we only have jurisdiction over the manager, yeah.
The more important part is that I will make sure that you know what it is that we're going down, what message we're going to bring and what we felt was the feedback when, uh, when the rally's over. It's only a couple of days and it goes pretty quick, so.
I think that you build momentum when you go to those things, if you skip a year, you know, it's like you go back to zero in terms of your visibility.
Last place I owe you.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I did send out, um, we had talked about the electric vehicle workshop being sometime in February with the town payment going on. I sent out an email to the board and to the cab to just say that I spoke to Joyce and Chuck and we thought that perhaps maybe the library was a bigger venue in order to accommodate a round table for electric vehicle owners. Uh, so we would do our presentation and allow everyone, uh, you know, facilitate that. We think it's gonna be really a great thing to do for the community and, and being at a library like that, I, I hope that the other towns will be more encouraged to come, like Wilmington and North Reading. Joyce is gonna be doing all the press releases, we're looking at library availability dates right now. So instead of having it in February, if you wanna move your cab meeting back to six-thirty instead of five-thirty, if that's okay, I apologize that we're changing that. But I, I just think it will be a, a better outcome and a better presentation if we, if we do move it. And we're thinking April, because March we do all of the, um, homeowners' educational programs that Joyce already has, uh, listed and has, has been on a public release.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And are we ready for, uh, the, the seventh item?
Sure.
So I think here, this is more, um, of a, of a technical adjustment based on the fact that we changed from fiscal to calendar and it doesn't, doesn't need to be a big rigmarole over it. It's more like, uh, do you have any thoughts, uh? Yeah, sure, do you have any thoughts, John?
Yeah, I, I, I would, uh, I would suggest, and I could make a motion if, uh, if you all agree, that we increase, uh, Ms. O'Brien's salary by one point seven-five percent to be reflective of the, uh, period from six-thirty, two thousand nineteen, to twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, uh, as well as a bonus of two thousand dollars. And I thought that that would be representative of what we've done in the past and, um, as we move into the, the new way of, of doing evaluations, it provides system transition. Is that, uh?
Anybody wanna discuss?
Does anybody else feel differently, or?
No.
Any discussion on this?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move.
Do you want to, you want to, we, well, you're ready.
I'll move that, uh, Ms. O'Brien's salary, uh, be increased by one point seven-five percent beginning one, one, two thousand twenty, within, uh, representative of the period from six-thirty, two thousand nineteen, to twelve-thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, within additional bonus of two thousand dollars.
Second?
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, any discussion? Tom, you ready to say?
No.
Yeah, I think again, it's a sort of a technical adjustment based on the calendar, um.
It would, it would, uh, be reflective of, uh, the salary at, at the end of June, two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, we've given her the option to, to accept it as a bonus or implied ICMA, so I think.
Okay, whichever way you would like to do that.
Okay, which is the language then say? And do, I'm sorry, do you wanna, I think, Colleen, as the subject of this motion?
I guess, just an option, 'cause last time I, I, I missed the, the ICMA end of the year, so I could, you know, I didn't have a choice. But that wasn't anybody's fault, it's just that there's guidelines to what you can do with that, and, um.
So it's best to leave it as an option.
Stock went up thirty percent, so you all owe me for everything that I missed with that, I'm just making sure.
So is, is that motion language adequate then?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay, all right, then I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, that's five and all against, like, we got, uh?
Can I say something?
Five votes, yeah.
Thank you, and I will continue to do my best to, uh, make this the best utility in the state.
Thank you, Colleen.
Very well deserved.
A mentor to. We're working hard to become not only the best utility, but also to be able to provide mentorship to other smaller utilities that have been waiting for us to step back up to the plate.
Great.
Please have the minister reflect to the board, applaud to the gentleman.
Mr. Chair? So I, I just acknowledge, which I think is a collective effort, but I, I think the, going forward, the, the paradigm for this process should be doing it exactly when we did, so close of year, doing it in January. I know that, uh, do it for all kinds of reasons and it happens in most companies. These things happen later than sooner and even though they're retroactive, that this is the right process to use. So I'd encourage just to make sure they're done in a timely way for everybody's benefit.
Instructions to the future board?
Uh, yes.
Parting gift.
One of many pieces of wisdom I'll be.
I'm sure we'll be collecting them over the next three months.
Thank you, Colleen and everybody, so, uh, ready to go to the goals? Always popular goals agenda item.
Yes.
We do, we do have a, a little table, matrix that.
I like this.
That, uh, Tracy made based on what people sent in.
And there's details, she attached details to it.
One glaring admission from. Yeah, the.
Chair? For the viewing audience, I think it would be.
Did he do this, yeah, okay.
Clear to just let them know that.
Actually, can you put this up on the screen?
Yeah, what, what I was really gonna ask is especially that people understand that Colleen has a large number of goals.
Correct.
Uh, this is additional consideration from the board's perspective, right?
Exactly, and pri- priorities, or, yeah, there could be certain priorities that we, that we feel should happen and I think had we, had this been two months ago, one would be, let's, let's get the payment issue resolved and I think that's kind of, it's, it's going down the tracks. Uh, but yes, your point is well taken, Tom.
Hey, can I say something about that too?
Please do.
I think it's really important that, um, Colleen help drive these goals with us. That her input is incredibly important, 'cause whatever we decide together, she has to implement. So I think it should be really all of us talking about it.
So maybe the way, just 'cause there's a lot of things to cover, should, maybe I.
You wanna start with me, since the, just my boxes are empty?
Okay, why don't we, yeah, let's, I saw that, um.
Yeah.
You have no goals.
Well, my, unfortunately, you know, I just flew back in.
Little cuts to the chase.
I just flew back in from Florida, the plane only landed.
I just, I just flew back from.
No sympathy here, Phil.
Plane only landed an hour ago.
I just flew back from Seattle and the plane landed at four, so.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, I only have, you know, it's the same two goals I've always had. You know, my goal will be reliable power at the lowest cost.
I'm sorry, I cannot go along with those.
That's basic.
All right, so that just fills out the matrix. So why, thank you, Phil, why don't, why don't I go through and, and sort of read them? And maybe the first cut at this, unless you disagree, is Colleen, you, you know, you, maybe like a jury, you could say, no, 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 that, that juror is out.
Okay.
You know, I don't like how he's looking.
Let's not, let's not go jury, you know?
So John had a few that were, all right, John's were, complete the filling of employee vacancies, I'll just read through them.
Can I stop there?
Please.
So, all I'm gonna say is.
Yep.
To recognize a barrier.
Yes.
I just want you to know upfront the barrier.
Okay.
So, filling the, the vacancies, very important goal, hiring a new HR person, great accomplishment. We do have three unions here.
Yep.
So, part of the last phase of reorganization is rewriting job descriptions and having them accepted by the union. So as long as you understand the process, we are moving forward for a full complement of our organizational layout.
Okay. All right, now John's next one was to, was to complete land acquisition for the new substation, one which I wholeheartedly agree with. I don't know that anybody would disagree, you know, and I, I know it's probably already Colleen at the top of your list.
The top.
The top, I mean, it's critically important.
Really, you think it's the top priority?
Yes.
For reliability and, uh.
I think George would agree too.
John's next one was, uh, kind of general, look for revenue enhancements and, um, I know we, we've, I know you have some small cell things happening now, maybe some requests, maybe there's an opportunity there. I know it's a tricky thing and the dollar value might not be very high, but that could be one. I know you've also been expanding some of the leasing on the fiber, which is great. Happy to help provide, if you need any expert input on what those markets are. I, I, just from my, my private, my work life, I can help on that, if you ever need it, just let me know.
Yeah, I would just also say, for the prior discussion we had earlier this, tonight, we, we need to recognize that in any company or in any business, the top line is very important. And, uh, so we, we understand why ours is not moving, but we need to, we need to move it, 'cause inflation will continue to happen and all the other costs don't go away, so.
Yeah, you're right, as, uh, Jack Welch used to say, if you're not growing, you're dying. So we need to grow revenue.
I guess that means we're dying, reflective of his firm too, his firm.
Case in point.
You know, one thing there, and, and George would welcome your input on this, um, you know, I know all the, all the towns are all talking about how do we electrify and get our buildings, maybe use heat pumps, and we have great programs, we're one of the few municipals that has heat pump rebates. You know, then, but people throw, throw out, oh, well, how can we do this at our school or our, whatever? They don't know how to start, so I don't know whether there's more we could do or maybe as part of this joint meeting, we could, we say, what is, what are your questions? And what do you, what do you, what data do you actually have? Somehow that could be a.
That's a very big part of the next meeting.
Well, today they, they issued, the Massachusetts came out with some of their climate action.
Okay.
I sent you the email. Um, I think with that coming out, uh, and maybe understanding a little bit better, if there's gonna be more state support in those type of things.
Yep.
I can work with Chuck's group, we can come up with a training program and meet with each of the schools, uh, and do a round robin between, you know, what are we offering and, and what does this mean? And what are the rebates and, you know, sometimes the most difficult things is if they're not, if the system is intact, what is the cost of replacing it?
Right.
You know what I mean? So, it's, we can try to help with those economics. You agree, Chuck? Yes?
That would be great, because there is your growth, you know?
We can prepare a training.
Yep, and then, yeah, and then, and then some of those facilities folks may not, they may need, they may need the help, right?
Fine, we can have another workshop where we invite all of the facilities.
Electrification workshop, all right.
Well, if you remember, I don't know how long ago it was, we, we were sitting here, I think over the boardroom, we had a strategic planning meeting around that and other subjects and I, I think that would not be a bad idea.
Okay, that's great, okay, so there's some concrete things that could happen. And then John had succession plan for senior-level employees.
Yes.
Okay.
Working on that.
And then, the list, the last one was a little open-ended, develop a list of things that we, which we can help with.
Touche.
And, and I had to put that there because, uh, one, we don't get paid, we have.
Correct.
Limited amount of time.
I've noticed.
We've got a certain amount of expertise.
Certain.
And so.
Limited.
Limited expertise, very limited.
Oh, there's limited time. But you're actually correct, yeah.
But I, I think, you know, as far as part of the pushback to us is, what are those things that we might be able to help with? Just, because you know us, you've known us for years now, and what we might be able to do, you just never know until you have an issue and a problem, you throw it on the table and you go, oh, I had no idea, then you had those connections or ideas or anything else that could possibly help you get to the next step faster.
Can I make, can I throw some goals at you then?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, okay, great.
Here's a, here's a copy for everybody.
Okay, um, I would love if you would entertain me bringing in some trainers. We, we may be having a new board member, because Tom is gonna be leaving. And so, we have training all the time, so board training, open meeting training, uh, what your role is, what my role is, so that we're always clear, um, and everybody's on the same page. And I'm not talking about anything big, maybe thirty minutes before a meeting, we can have, uh, someone come in.
Yeah.
Good, I agree, I agree.
Do you have resources in that area?
Um, it, if we do a couple of different topics, we can have legal come in, we can have the state come in. You know, the state is, is a specialist on this, legal is a specialist on this. So we may have a combination of a couple of things and, and make it a quick, fairly quick, high level, here's the highlights, points, and just people can remember that, um, when, when we're off and running, that's all.
Would, I haven't thought through it clearly, but would some of that be appropriate for the CAD members?
Yeah, this, right, everybody would be invited to train.
I think it's good, I mean, they deal with the same.
And in that way, we're all on the same page.
Okay, so it sounds like you will develop a list of things that, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and Tracy will help me put some tra- put the training together and, but I think we should do that, maybe when, when Tom is leaving and someone new comes or whatever, we can make that transition.
Okay.
Agenda items, so a lot of times we're, we're building the agenda, um, just before the meeting.
Real time.
Real time, and I would feel more comfortable in the open meeting laws if we, if I felt like the agenda is, it's almost like we should be making the agenda for the next meeting at this meeting. And you can do that under procedures, according to the AG's office. Now, that's not reality all the time, but if we got more in the habit of doing that, I think that would give me and staff a little bit more time to put together really good qual- quality presentations, um, so that i- it's what you want and you convey to me what you want and then we can work on it. Sometimes I feel like we're giving a presentation and I know it's good, but it could be better and I just think if we talked about it, like, what do you want to see next month? And then I could be really prepared and Chuck could be more prepared and he's not looking at me crazy on Thursday morning and. That's, and I just, I just think that would help everyone, it would help Tracy and.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, and I'm not saying that always happens, 'cause things come up and we need data and that's great, but if we just got, got on that path.
No, I think it's been a historical issue. I mean, it's, again, it, it's just how companies work, but it's not, it isn't best practice and it doesn't allow you, as you said, to.
It does keep us online with open meeting laws, because that, that way, you're all basically telling me what you wanna know and then I'm going and doing it and it's, it's always, you know, a quorum of direction and then we're not, no one's confused and I'm not reprioritizing staff's work, you know what I mean, so.
So could you add an agenda item to the agenda saying, discussion on next month's, discussion on?
Right, under schedules, when we talk about schedules, actually talking about next month's agenda, not everything, but key points that you might want me to do studies on or something, you can put in as, um, procedures, it, it would come under procedures. As long as there's no opinion discussed on the topic, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
That makes sense.
All right.
That's good.
We can even do that at the end of this meeting, wouldn't that be exciting? We could talk about potential like, you know, it's.
Oh, wait a minute, let's not get.
All right, well, it sounds like all five of John's, um. Alright, well, it sounds like all five of John's, um, ideas are good ones, which is really a, a first, actually.
I, I actually have one more and then I'm done. Okay, so policies are a governing opportunity, right? To basically tell me what you would like done. So for example, this renewable policy that's been out there. Um, we've spent a significant amount of time unwinding everything and how power has been bought over the last whatever. And now it's, it should be very transparent. You guys should know exactly, we use a TFA based on price and time triggers. Chuck did this amazing slide that we presented and it's supposed to be interactive. So now, the, the state's coming out with clean initiatives, you know where the bill is, you know everything. So now, we can put in this project or what we wanna buy, it spits out an impact to a rate. In, out, in, out. So whatever it is that you want me to reflect that policy on. I have now provided you the information in order for you to make that decision. But again, you have to make the decision about the policy and then I will make it happen. But I feel like it's my duty to at least get, and make sure that you're clear on all the information to make the, to make a good decision. Okay, so.
And, and policy meaning like what percentage of renewable, that, that's our job?
Right, that particular policy is, you know, with Chuck's presentations, what the state is doing, what our commitments are. What is our commitment? If you wanna go above and beyond that, if you wanna go past carbon free and go into renewables. By keeping recs, Chuck's gonna put that in, we're gonna explain what's the impact.
On the rate.
On the rate, okay, and exactly whether we're above or beyond the requirements that are being placed on the MLP.
So you're saying you'll do, you'll make sure you meet the state requirements, at least the minimum state requirements. And anything more than that would have to be an instruction from the commissioners.
Well, actually with the state requirements, it's kind of interesting. MLPs are technically exempt. But, because we want to and we actually do more than a lot of other utilities do. That's why this has all been unwound and presented to you so that you can see that the majority of our portfolio is carbon free. Now, we have some renewable projects, sure. We also have renewable projects that don't have recs issued. So Chuck can talk about all of those type of things. But you'll be able to make a decision if you say to me, we wanna be carbon free, but we still wanna have true renewable. And in order to do that, I may have a renewable project where the recs, we keep them, but they were only trading for a penny. So, I don't know how much credit we get for that, but we get the rec and we call renewable. Or we might have a renewable project where the rec is trading for a lot of money that we could invest into a new clean renewable. Chuck has already told you that these electric vehicle charging stations, our commitment to that is to make sure that the power charging those cars. Is coming from carbon free. So this would all be part of the revision to the policy. But once you decide, we will make it happen.
So that whole thing, we'll do another night, hopefully not, we don't have to get into those weeds tonight as far as what all that means. But thank you Chuck and thank you Colleen.
It is on here.
It is, yeah.
I'm just talking about the policies. If you wanna change the policy, that can also tell me what you want me to do different.
So then going to the others, you're, you're ahead of, um, you, you anticipated the next one. Three of us had, you know, kind of determined what, what our percentage would be. And as part of that, you know, mine, mine added the tweak is that we should, as a board, weigh in on elements of, relevant elements of proposed state legislation. Like, that's kind of what we're here for, is to make policy decisions and that, if there's something that's proposed. That could be a whole piece of legislation or even an element of a piece of legislation, it's, it's proper and right for us to just vote a position and discuss it. So that's the only tweak I have on that. So if, unless people disagree with that, then we already, we have three of us that have put that in and I see nods and.
Yeah, it seems like you're saying it's really a board goal Dave, not a, not really.
In fact, and that's a board goal.
Correct.
It's ours, yeah. Quite right, that is, that's, I mean that to be a board goal, that we determine, you have the tools as you said. But we have to decide what policy we, what is the amount we want. And if there's a relevant piece of state legislation, we're making our voice known of, okay, yes, we agree with that or we don't or whatever. Unlikely that we wouldn't, but, okay. So that one seems like that will, that's, we all agree on that. Then we also had a few, this has come up because it, driven by this, the town wanting to know, could they redevelop? And then the, the ask here is simply, develop some data, like is it even feasible? Is it ridiculously expensive? Is it, you know, would it cost a hundred million and forget about it? Whatever the data shows, who owns these pieces of land, you know?
I, I need to write down this, I, I don't know that I understand the scope from what you've written here, so could you just tell me what?
Okay, we, I guess.
That's, that's not the goal, the goal's inside here, right?
Um, this is the kind of the.
I mean, I hope that, that can't be the goal.
This is just the shorthand of the goal. The, the emails had. Oh, I had an original version that is now in my email.
Well, can I make a suggestion? So, if that's accepted as a good thing in, in terms of, but we need to know more specifics. Maybe we wanna agree on the high level and then we can.
I think that's right.
And probably realistically, I'd say, if we come out of here with what the goals are, it's, you know, we have to integrate this. We've just seen this for the first time, I'd suggest coming away with, here's the goals and then we pull them together for the next meeting.
I think that's right.
Does that make sense?
I mean, here, here's my, my problem with this one, it's the fact that, you know, this is a long way down the road at this point, in my opinion.
What do you mean, long day, long, long way?
There's no, there's no plan on the table, it's just all discussion, discussion, discussion. It may be ten years before anything is done on these sites, that's how usually it works.
Yeah, but all this is developing.
I don't think we should spend a lot of money on this.
Me neither.
Or go into big, you know, detail of cost and all that stuff. I, I think it'd be more just monitoring what the town.
Yeah, but isn't that.
The town is thinking about at this point. I think that'd be a much more effective thing, at this point.
But, I mean, I guess, wait, my perception would be, you can look at it as a reactive measure or proactive measure, right? So, if we wait for the town, I mean, if they're not being critical, then it could be ten years. But if there's an opportunity out there to do something, I mean, we've talked about Dave investing, you know, questioning the investments here. Because there are a lot of costs, it's an aged building, so, uh, there's also a case of being opportunistic. If we found another location, right?
And if this one was, if there was thirty million dollars worth of land out there, which there isn't, but I'm just saying, to pick a ridiculously high number.
I'm not saying it's the goal Phil, I'm just saying.
If we own the land and it's worth many million.
There's no, the only reusable land would be to move to Camp Greta Skill. And that I understand is off the table at this point in time. So, I mean, I think, you know, you're talking long, long time.
Yeah, you know, I, I do this.
Wouldn't move this to outside already. I don't know, it should be in ready.
I, I just do this as a, actually, as a flow chart, that here's the biggest hurdle to doing this, and then the next biggest hurdle, the next. And the biggest hurdle might be, what do you do with all the trucks? And where do you put all these trucks and equipment? I don't know that that's the answer. But maybe at the three or four stage, here's the flow chart of what you need to think about if you were to do this kind of a study. And maybe we just use that as a, as a mechanism to.
I mean, I guess something other than nothing, how about that? I mean, because, I mean, because there has been a lot of talk, there was a meeting with.
That's crystal clear.
I mean, it can't be that there's a, that there's, uh, planning processes or concepts floated and we're not even at the table for them. Um, I think we have a lot to offer, even to say, if we know enough to know that, oh gosh, this would cost. Tens of millions of dollars to execute and would could never be done in sooner than ten years. Or conversely, if we knew what some of these parcels are worth, I just think we should be part of that discussion. That's the highest level of it.
Maybe if you gave me, uh, a scope and an amount of money and say, okay, don't spend more than a couple of thousand dollars. Do a quick research on land.
Yeah.
And an approximate cost of, of a facility.
And what's the value, and what are the value of these parcels and buildings if sold and the money went to RMLD?
Yeah, I mean, at the very, I, at the very least, uh, cause as I recall, the last discussion we had on the subject. There was not a lot of clarity around who owned what, so I mean, this is very basic. So if you could come to a table on a development meeting with the town, it'd be nice to have some basic information. And I agree with Phil, I mean, we don't wanna spend.
Even if you, you should do a two thousand dollar study today. Again, this, you're talking ten years down the road. We're not talking, you know, the next two or three years.
It's just, but it's a chicken and egg.
Twenty years down the road.
But it's a chicken and egg thing and we're either the chicken or the egg, we're one or the other, you know?
We built this building, the idea was we'd be here for fifty years.
George. George, we're the chicken or the egg. George knows which one it is.
I think of a piece of land in Wilmington where I could put you.
I knew you were.
George, I was waiting after Phil made that call.
Oh, look at John, right under the.
Yeah, okay, so that, that, there's that one and there's a discussion to have.
Is the, David, just so I'm clear, is the concept to evaluate the potential of giving this building taxes back to the town? And trying to save more money, so the town gets more money, to see if, if a change like that. To allow economic development in this pocket would benefit or save us money and help the town? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, and, and by the town, it just doesn't mean just the town government, it means everybody, it means.
No, I, I mean.
Real estate values and how the downtown looks and all that.
But, but the methodology is very, very important because, I mean, if, for example, I mean, if the town were to say, uh, sure, we'd love to have that property to sell. To get more money off and more taxes, you get out of there. As a matter of fact, why don't you go float a bond issue and build your own building someplace else? So that now we have the bond issue in our books and they have the revenue from, you know, the building or wherever else. I'm not saying that that's unreasonable, I'm just saying, in a financial perspective, it puts a tremendous burden on us at the RMLD to maintain our rates. And to service funds. And that's one scenario that could come out of all of this. So I'd have to be very careful with what would transpire in terms of what the recommendations would be.
Right.
Cause different parties have different views of this.
Right, we're just looking to develop, in my mind, to develop the facts.
I think, aren't we trying, voting, so, uh, uh, we all chip, but let's get through the whole list.
Alright, that, and that's another one that was, it showed up on three, three things. And then, um, and the revenue stream scorecard from Tom. Tom, how does that differ from John's possible revenue enhancements? Is there more you wanted to say about the scorecard?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess what I envisioned this, uh, it certainly intersects it. I guess what I was looking at this is, is having, uh, which I, Colleen is, is tracking already, she's doing those things. So I, I guess from a board perspective, it's, uh, keeping that in front of us all the time. Because again, revenue's a critical issue, so there's a number of things we are doing, but it's a dynamic kind of process. But, and have the discipline that we actually include that, that becomes a, a, you know, I think as a board, having scorecards is helpful. You know, rather than looking at a lot of pages of data, so having a scorecard every month or quarter saying, here's the, here's what we're getting out of solar. Here's what we're getting out of this revenue enhancement, you know, doing this, the, you know, the rebates, you know, whatever. So, yeah, I mean, I think they, they're very similar.
Okay, and then, then the only other one that's on here is, well, Dave has accelerated electrification, which is, I think, a great one. And I think it also dovetails with, um, you know, your point earlier, Tom, about what could be sources of revenue growth. And electrification is, you know, that, that dovetails, right? I think we all, I think, from what I've heard, we've all agree with that.
I, I don't know what that means, electrification.
It means, well, it means.
It's out of the nineteen thirties.
Exactly.
Let's electrify something.
Well, it's like if, if a town, if a big building has a gas furnace and instead you put a ground source or air source heat pump. And then the, the heat is coming from electricity.
It's also more electric vehicle, charging stations, that would be electrification.
Promoting electric cars so that more people are using electricity, that's fair. Okay, so, and it dovetails with the revenue growth goal. Um, so, that's all of them except for Dave has provide fiber to one large pilot customer, which is an interesting one.
That was to you Dave.
Thank you Dave, I appreciate it.
Just try to.
Little old time say.
Throw a bone.
You know, one, one, one way to tweak this could be, explore how to promote use of fiber by emerging wireless technologies. Which is a thing. I know you already asked.
That's kinda what you said, right?
Well, it's more alike one.
It could be, I mean, a large customer could be. Right, I mean, although they have files, so they already have fiber, but there's AT&T, there's others. And if, that could be how that, I, I would recommend that get tweaked. And again, my offer stands, Colleen, if you want any, if you want any, you know, need any expert help, I can get you in touch with people who can give you. Not that you do, not that you do. And then Phil's, reliable power, now I just don't know about this one, you know?
Yeah, I vote against that.
Please, what are you trying to get at here?
I'm just trying to say, these are the basics that, that we should, you know, as, as we've said, we're in the wires business. You know, and so, you know, we should, you know, no matter what we do here, this should be the absolute base.
Okay, I guess I agree with that. And it also, I think we have the substation as a top priority, already on Colleen's list and mentioned by John. So I think that goes very much to that, and I think I agree with you. Lowest cost, I don't know that I agree that it has to be the lowest. But that also goes to one that, yeah, was, was that we should, the last one that's on the list is. That the board should review our mission statement and potentially update it at some point this year. I don't even know what those details might be. But that kinda, you have, those are mission type things, right? Yours go to mission.
Yes.
And I'm suggesting mi- update mission statement. So you and I are actually agreeing on this.
I mean, I just, I agree with what Phil said, I, I guess from my perspective, as I look at Colleen's job description. That's kind of what she does as part of her job descriptions, and it, so I mean.
I just don't wanna lose sight that, you know, these are the things we, we should be doing, these are the base. We can go off and say, you know, we need to accelerate electrification. And that's fine, but let's not lose sight of, of what our basics are too. That's part of this whole process, yeah.
In terms of like making this coherent and something that isn't, that's tractable for you. What I would suggest, and then tell me if you, what you think, I could iterate with you, with permission, with Colleen. Until we have this to something which is specific and that you feel is workable.
I actually, it's funny with me the way you got it written.
Okay, and then, uh, then maybe what we could do is kind of this, the essence of this discussion. And, and all of these, unless anybody disagrees, we just kind of vote to say that, that we would like the, this matrix as discussed here. And maybe as edited over the next few days to be what we collectively recommend.
I was gonna say, we could do this offline by each one of us taking this list and put a ranking, one, two, three, four, five, whatever on it. And then send it back, uh, to Tracy and let her compile it, so we see what the vote is, we don't have to.
Can we combine a few of them first though? Could we combine a few of them first, you think?
I think we already have, haven't we? Like revenue enhancements or revenue streams.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I was gonna, I, it's, this isn't gonna be your goals, right? We're gonna take, this is the universe of things from which we're gonna select, uh, critical, whatever is it two or three, I mean, I think we.
Yeah, but I mean, so many of these are.
Three new ones per quarter.
Three for a quarter? I've been there.
I don't wanna make it sound like, uh, you know, never mind, I'll just be quiet.
No, don't be quiet.
No, we, we wanna hear what you say.
I'm doing these. You hired me to already do these.
Right.
So, what I'm asking is, you know, if you want it reported in a particular way, you want presentations, you, how you want it formal. Um, or you want me to shift priorities to, to do more focus on something, is more of the input that I need. But there isn't anything here that I don't think that we're already at, working on.
So one, one thought, maybe take one of these for a board meeting and say, we'd like you to focus on one of these that we have listed here. Tell us what you've done and what you're doing and let's provide you input on terms of it. And then the next board meeting, we have a different one, et cetera. But then at the quarterly review, we kinda cover three. That have been talked about in the board meeting, does that make sense?
Good idea. We could roll, and we could add them to the agenda at the end of this meeting.
At the agenda.
We'll set, this is the next one, next month we'll cover this one.
Good idea.
Yeah, I mean, the only, it needs a little cleanup in my view.
Yes, it does.
Right now we have eight, eleven, fif- we have seventeen things.
There's really about six there when you merge.
Yeah, but they, but we gotta merge them, I mean, if we keep this list in front of us, we're gonna be.
Alright, they're voting on the run things, yeah.
Alright, I, I propose that if, if, unless somebody else wants, that I can go and edit these down and, and vet them through Colleen.
I like that idea.
Present them back to all of you.
I like that.
Oh, there's a combining them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll sit down, I gotta sleep on it, vet them, run it through Colleen and then we'll bring it back at the next meeting, okay?
Yeah, and I, I guess this is our first time through this, so I, I think since we know Colleen's gonna work on this stuff. I would err on the side of being focused because, you know, if we end up with nine, I, I just think it's.
No, it should only be a couple. Cause like, like she said, she's doing all these things, it's just saying, I think what we're saying is, this year, we wanna put extra focus on these couple areas, right?
That's what I'm saying.
The operative word is. Couple.
We have a plan, I believe, that I'm editing these down, running them through Colleen, presenting them back to you, and we'll put our hands up. We have a plan, I believe, that I'm editing these down, running them through Colleen, presenting them back to you, and we'll put our hands up.
All in favor of Dave doing that?
Fine.
Second, inform.
Okay, fine.
Third, fourth.
I guess, is that a motion?
No, just, it's just an affirmation. But Dave, actually, that's a great-
You've been assigned.
We can't have five people do it, Dave, so that's, that's a good idea.
Okay, great, let's move on, and Colleen's gonna update us on recent activity where a vendor is trying to install small cells in the town.
It's kind of an interesting, so we had, uh, some customers that were concerned that new poles were being petitioned to the DPW to be installed in front of their location. And there had been some communication to RMLD that I wasn't aware of, but it came in to an operating assistant question on whether or not we allow, uh, cell attachments. We didn't have a master agreement, so until the master agreement is done, technically, the answer's no, but I think if the call had come to me, it would have been like, we're gonna have a master agreement done in a couple weeks, and we're working on one. But this particular, um, uh, company is, business model is not to coexist on electric utility poles, it's really more to have their own poles, so that they can put cells up, uh, in sublet out, uh, different carriers from the top of those poles. We would much rather have, uh, those type of things attached to our poles, um, in accordance with the town's policies on aesthetics, uh, in addition to our master policy, um, which cares for the safety of the public, the workers, and the assets of the RMLD. Creating a master plan has been very difficult, it's very complex, uh, in everything that you have to address when you're putting these type of things, I gave everyone some suggestions, uh, like RF emissions, um, RF, uh, interference with our antennas, things of that nature, shut offs for high energy to the linemen, uh, union issues, uh, excuse me, stop clocks, and this all came about because the FCC made an order that wireless is now considered a utility. And prior to that, wireless was not considered a utility, so now it's in the same boat as Comcast and other things. And we can't without, um, we can't with any discrimination say you can't attach, unless there's a safety or capacity issue. So that's kind of the guidelines, so, so what happened with this is, these poles were gonna be installed, so they went to the DPW, and now there's gonna be a continued hearing on that. We got our master agreement out, we actually met with Verizon Wireless today, it was a very productive meeting. They want to work with us on it, we also sent it to AT&T, who was the one that had hired this company, uh, to put the poles in. So now AT&T has our, our, um, agreement. In addition to that, I sent out an email to all of the CAD members saying, listen, I, I, I'm putting together this memo of suggestions that towns should have in their cell, uh, aesthetics policy, that everyone should really have, and, you know, it, it's not my job to tell the town what, but we just want it to be cohesive with us. So if the town says, we want a restriction on forty-five height, I'm gonna follow that, but I have a lot of poles that are fifty feet, so that would mean that I, I'm not gonna allow an antenna on a fifty-foot pole if the town says forty-five foot pole. So we have to come to a, a, an agreement of what it is that the town is trying to achieve, and what we're trying to achieve as a utility. And I have to work with each town, uh, to help them with that, I think, because I, I'm not sure that anybody really has, has that policy that's, that's finalized, um, that meshes in with us. Each one of our poles is fifty percent owned by the RMLD and fifty percent owned by the Verizon. And these companies that are gonna request, I don't know that it's in the form of a license, but you do have to ask the town if you can be in the public right of way. Um, so there are some processes that I'm putting together in that memo that I will bring to each of the town administrators and town managers and explain. This is how we see that it works, this is where the FCC order applies to you as the town, this is where it applies to us and doesn't apply to us. So right now, we actually have an argument that that shot clock applies to municipalities, but it does not apply to MLPs. That does not mean that we don't want to work with these attaches, but if they give me a hundred poles, I can't have sixty days to get them all done, that's, that's not gonna happen. So, that shot clock and interpretation of the shot clock, I can explain that to the towns and how it differs with us, and just get everybody on the same page, so, that's all I really have on that topic.
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, no, I, it, I'm, I'm missing a lot of knowledge here, but, so, does this mean that new poles by other companies will be put in, in the towns?
The FCC says that they have a right to install a pole. They, they, they're not forced to attach to ours, um, and they're, they, like I said, there's FCC guidelines with-
Yeah, yeah, the reason I'm asking is it just, I mean, if, if, as I think about it, you could go home, you could have, uh,
Yes.
Thirty-four poles, I guess.
Exactly, yeah.
And, and I, I, to the point of say, I mean, to me, it just seems, there's maybe there's a lot more that's been done, it seemed like this is the Wild West. I mean, people are gonna be sticking up, uh, things onto poles, and it's gonna be unregulated, and it, and what about the competitive landscape?
I mean, it's a practical matter, they're gonna get put where there's demand, so where there's the concentration of people, maybe you'd want, need one near the train station. Like, the first one that went in in Mansfield was done near the train station, because you have a hundred people sitting there waiting for a train, looking at videos, and so the, the network crashes, that's where they, that's where they're gonna get put first.
It just seems like it could be, so, I mean, right now, I think if you go down most streets in Reading, you know, we don't have underground, you know, you wouldn't say,
Right.
Gee, I wish we had two more poles on this street, I mean, they're like every four, some-
You don't have to go on poles, the, the town's aesthetic-
Right, they don't.
The policies that-
They can go on top of a buil- a tall building or a-
Yeah, but they have the option.
They can go on, on other things, and the town's aesthetics guidelines are, would help the requesting with that. But if they're not gonna go on that, we don't want any additional poles, we, we, we don't want to lose the revenue of that small piece of money that they are gonna give us, two hundred and seventy dollars per attachment, so, and we don't want any more double, we don't want any poles.
And you haven't heard from Verizon at all?
I mean, that's Verizon today.
You did meet with Verizon.
Yes, we did.
It seems like a-
What do they want to do?
They were the ones that came in and, and, and you have Verizon, and then you have Verizon Wireless.
I meant wireless, yeah, I meant the small cells.
Today.
And what do they want to do?
There's about forty to fifty, I believe, locations in the town of Reading that they are interested in.
All right, well, that's a big deal.
My understanding that it would be to attach to an existing pole.
So, you have Verizon Wireless wants to put forty small cells on our poles, basically.
That's my understanding, but it was very preliminary, we're, we're, and the AT&T where there's the three poles through Tilson Tech.
Why is it only three, though, for AT&T?
Well, that's all they requested, so, I'm trying to stop new poles and have them wait for the master agreement, okay?
Right, but it's, you need, you also need the standards also, you want to have those, uh, yeah, you want a master agreement, that's the legal agreement, but you want to have the technical and aesthetic standards in place also.
Would they interfere? I mean, I'm wondering if you start putting these, they're not gonna interfere with the-
That's one of the things that would be in the technical standards, is it may not, it may not, it must not provide interference. If it does, they have to do X, Y, and Z, those are the types of things that go in the technical standards, that we would adopt.
Is Comcast involved in it, too, will they move into the wireless?
Comcast does strand mounted, uh, wifi, you know how you see Xfinity wifi pop up?
Yeah.
They, they, they just hang like, uh, you see a little square thing hanging on cable?
Yeah.
They just put it right on the strand, uh, between the poles?
Okay.
And I guess you have no control over that, it's their cable.
I actually added it to the master agreement.
Okay.
Because I do want to-
You want to control it.
I want to understand if that's considered a, an attachment, even though it's floating.
I think in real, what, what, in other jurisdictions, they're just doing it, and they get power from the cable itself, the coaxial has power in it. So it's, it's sort of self-powered, and it's a wifi transmitter.
I think Comcast would grow out of business if they don't go wireless.
So if you look at the cable, on the communications, the lower one, and you see a little square thing hanging down, that's the Comcast wifi router. Antenna. So that's what Comcast is doing. Anyway.
Okay. Okay.
Good discussion, uh-
But, yeah.
Good luck with that.
So Colleen's on top of it, it's complicated, a lot of other light plants are doing stuff, and, you know, and so all of that collective knowledge will feed into what we-
I had no idea that was going on, did you?
I heard somebody complaining about it.
Let's do it. Um, okay, Chuck, you're up, sorry to make you wait so long, it must be brutal back there. That's an hour and twenty minutes.
He was riveted to this.
I was thinking earlier, I was gonna be brief, but that would take too long.
To paraphrase Mark Twain.
Um, a couple of quick things to append to Colleen's report, uh, we talked about a community relations update.
Yep.
And I, and I have a few things. Um, my experience here, uh, over the last year has been that RMLD provides, uh, quite a few, uh, community support functions, but what's very interesting about them, most of them have a very humanistic interpersonal, uh, person-to-person, where, uh, the employees here, uh, our team reaches out and actually makes contact with people in the community, and, uh, I think that's a significant, uh, improvement over the way, uh, some other programs work, where, you know, they'll go out and hang banners and say, you know, hey, we're putting banners up for the community, or, uh, other, uh, projects that they do around there to the community's benefit, but without that interpersonal, uh, interaction. And by that, um, uh, we have a historic, uh, calendar, uh, that we prepare every year, and we distribute, and it's usually done in conjunction with some sort of a beneficial program. This year, uh, we ran a coat drive, and, uh, we collected, uh, an estimated three hundred and twenty-five coats, uh, that were turned over to, uh, Anton's, uh, cleaned up and, uh, distributed to kids and adults. Um, so that was, uh-
Nice.
Right. One beneficial program.
Did Anton's also donate the cleaning as well?
They donated the cleaning.
Yeah.
And distributed them, and we aren't the only entity that contributes to that, but, um, we run, uh, as you know, art contests, uh, in our elementary schools and our high school, uh, the high school artwork, artwork is hanging out in the hall, and the elementary school artwork is back in our cafeteria area. Uh, we then judge it and, and hand out as many awards as, as we can, uh, the artwork is pretty amazing. And we put a lot of effort into theming what we do, so that every year is a little something, uh, different for the students to focus on. Uh, we will be scheduling the awards in February, uh, dates to be determined. Um, I think we want Colleen back from, uh, Florida for, for those presentations. Um, as Colleen mentioned, our new homeowner information sessions will be coming up in March. Uh, we invite each year, anybody who's moved into the territory to come in and, uh, learn about what we do, our programs, our rates, uh, services we provide, uh, how to work with us and contact us, uh, for any issues that they have. And we explain, uh, new programs that we have, uh, such as the, um, uh, IVR, notification system for, for outages, bidirectional, uh, that will probably be discussed at the, the March meetings. Uh, we will be, uh, working out the, uh, launch of the IVR system, uh, we have, uh, field tested it. Uh, I hope to Colleen's satisfaction, uh, haven't heard anything bad back yet, so, uh, we're assuming that, uh, we're ready to do a couple more full-scale, uh, kinds of tests.
And that's the system where you can find out where there's an outage and communicate and, yeah.
You, you have the chance to register, which means, uh, we give outage updates, uh, so when an outage occurs, uh, we may not know the initial cause and, uh, the estimated time to restoration, but, uh, as we go forward, uh, and we establish those in different areas, uh, we can push that out. Customers have the option, uh, to, uh, text or call in, uh, to the system, rather than to the operator, uh, and let us know, although our metering system itself is, uh, a parallel, uh, notification, uh, of any, uh, unusual circumstances out on the system, so, um-
Can I make a quick comment on that? So when we do the campaign on the IVR system, right, so that you're gonna say, I wanted to receive a text, just like your kid's in school tomorrow, school will be closed. So you'll have an option between phone call, email, and text, it's really important that people sign up, um, for a couple of reasons. One, so that you know if there's an outage in your area and what the update is, estimated time of restoration. But in addition to that, you gave me approval for these updates of meters. When we do meter updates, we're not knocking door to door, we're gonna be replacing the meters in areas, and it would be really helpful if we could use the IVR to send out, okay, we're gonna be in this area, send out a polygon and say, we're gonna be doing a meter upgrades for the next two weeks in your area. And so for that reason, all the more important that everyone signs up, thank you.
And everybody needs to sign up with their cellphone, their mobile numbers, right, because they wouldn't want to give their home number, because it wouldn't work if the power went out, they wouldn't get their alert, right, so it has to be all mobile numbers?
I think you can check one, two, or all three, you can check email, go ahead.
We, we have three options, you can receive a text message, which would go to your cellphone number, you can receive an email, uh, often that goes out over a different system and will come in, uh, and then the third option, uh, is that you receive a call.
But it can be to your cellphone or your home, it can be to whatever you want.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if the power's out, the home phone call won't work, right?
You can get it, some people like phone calls on their cell phones instead of a text.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, in some cases, the landline works, uh, I'm not sure how many people still have landlines, but, uh-
I do.
Comcast just disconnected, they, they had text.
If they do Vo, VoIP now.
They discontinued that.
I've never tried it.
There is no power, uh, because they, they do digital over internet.
VoIP, voice over internet protocol.
The Bell system used to have its own separate-
That, that was a low voltage, twelve volt system, and it would carry on even when there was no-
Right.
Power.
No power, right, so there's no more calls that can go through without power.
But we will also take multiple devices and multiple, uh, contact points. So, let's say that, uh, somebody here at the table was married, uh, and wanted both themselves and their partners to know that, uh-
You could give two phone numbers.
We could give two phone numbers or a phone and text, whatever works best.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're excited, uh, it's, uh, another way of reaching out to people.
Yeah.
So.
Got a lot of use for that.
But, that, that's it on the community relations.
So the, the art contest is scheduled for February fourth, are you saying that's now off, that date has been changed?
Uh-
I have that in my calendar for, for the fourth and the fifth.
Okay.
You can still do, I've made every one of them, I can skip one, right?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I didn't know that a date had been set, I-
Yes, Joyce has already set the date.
Okay, well-
And even a snow date.
Joyce didn't update me, she and I are going to have a communications discussion tomorrow.
It says dates TBD.
Yes, yes, I've done every one of them, since we started.
So, Phil will be handing out the awards, it's all right. I didn't realize that the fourth had been picked off.
Joyce will write me my script, and I'll be all set.
After she's done updating me, I'm sure she'll be glad to do that.
Actually, Chuck, you can be acting GM to hand out the awards with Phil.
I can, thank you.
With that period of tone.
Okay, I, I will need, since you're responsible for the GM and I will be acting GM, I'm going to need you to authorize a round trip airplane ticket from, for me, from Orlando to Boston, and then back again on the fifth.
Oh, you're gone.
I am gone.
Yeah.
The fifth is my mother's ninetieth birthday and my fourth anniversary, but I am glad to fly back here for an award ceremony that Tuesday night.
Not to make us feel guilty.
So, um, we're moving up to power supply on the agenda now, okay, so, next, please. We, uh, got all of the information in, so we are pretty much set for calendar year twenty nineteen. Uh, the numbers are in, the numbers are done, absent, uh, any adjustments that ISO sends out, uh, over the next month or two, um, we're in, we're locked. This is the performance for the year on the system, and as you can see, uh, we've maintained, uh, ourselves under budget, um, the- The November and December actuals for power supply costs came in under budget. We finished the year without surprises and in good shape.
Great, great.
Next please. As you can see, the energy costs were close. Actually, the energy costs in December were a little bit above what we expected. The savings will be in capacity and transmission, which are the next two slides. There are the savings in capacity for December, slate for November. But our capacity was about one point five million below what we had as the budget going into the year.
That's great that they're so close, I mean, they're really following it from both the budgeting and the actual operation.
Well, capacity costs are normally fixed unless there are adjustments that ISO floats through. And we got some close. But you're right, the capacity costs track fairly well. Unfortunately, the capacity costs are only about seven percent of the total budget. Transmission costs will also look fairly close. You'll see May, June, and July, actuals were below budget. And the reason for that is the budget was prepared without an adjustment for the battery. And so the actual battery impacts are reflected here. Next year, the battery will be budgeted in. But we had a May kickoff for the battery and we said, ah, you know, let's assume the worst. And then the numbers looked really good. I just pulled a Hamed, okay? I whined about how much it was gonna be and how bad a year we were gonna have. Lo and behold, on time and under budget. Hero, I get to go home.
Sandbag that one.
Next please. So, same slide. I guess what I would say about this is that we actually added a, and I'm not quite sure how to define it, resource powered by flowing water into our portfolio.
Hydro, I'd use the word hydro.
Hydro?
Yeah, try that one.
I'll try, I'll try that. We picked up a hydro resource.
See, I'm learning, guys.
Very good.
We had the Exelon contract, which expired December thirty-first, so that will not be in the next one that you see. All in all, I would say a pretty good year. The loads overall were slightly below what was budgeted. But we're working on figuring out what the drivers are for that and what those are going to look at. We did have a meeting this week with one of the members of a conservation commission here in Reading. He's a resident in Reading and he owns a consulting company that looks at heat pump technology for MassSave. He's a contractor with MassSave with, I think it's about six years plus of experience. And he's going to come in, he's coming back to us with a proposal to help us with the evaluation and implementation of heat pump technology in terms of delivery, so that we have a resource that can talk with customers about making sure systems are not oversized, making sure that there are the correct additions to the system. When you put a heat pump in, you have to put in an exterior thermostat so that it can make judgment calls as to which system to bring online. And so we're gonna entertain a proposal there to help us kick it off correctly. Next please. That's it.
Alright.
So that's it for 2019, we done did okay, I think.
Alright, thanks Chuck. Good year. Thank you.
It's not me, it's
That was your first full calendar year with us.
Yes, it is. This is now fifteen months. And Bill and I will be glad to help you with succession planning and make it a priority of the commission because both of us will schedule up getting our sorry posterior's out of here so that you have the room and ability to do that.
Alright, thank you Chuck.
Thanks Chuck.
Come to my favorite part of the meeting, which is the end of it. And kidding aside, we oh hi Karen, did you wanna say something? Please, please come up. Yeah, please come up and properly identify yourself for our television viewing audience. Thank you.
Karen Herrick, Reading Finance Committee. This whole year, I've been trying to understand your model. And I have a quick question is, how do you measure, if it's a business, it's profitability? We're a lot of talk about revenues and expenses. What is the key metric that a municipal light plant uses to say, are we properly leveraging our assets and whatnot? However you want to explain.
Heavily regulated, but I'll throw that one to Colleen. Isn't it that we have to only make eight percent more than
Do I need a piece, should I write this down? Like, how long is the answer? Because it's late, I won't remember.
Thirty seconds?
Oh, alright, then I might remember, okay, thank you.
We divide our system
You need a microphone Chuck.
We divide our system into essentially two operating characteristics that we work against. Power supply is roughly seventy-five percent of our operating cost. And we target finishing the year at zero. So we're constantly adjusting to make sure that what we collect from the ratepayers is what we need to pay our power supply bills. And so that, that's a pass through.
You're asking
We make no profit on that.
You're asking about the overall business, not just power supply rate?
How, within your industry, how do you compare? If there's like some gold standard for, like, what is the, what is the metric that says, oh man, I wanna be like that electric? I wanna be like that power company? Because it's like a turn on assets, what, like, what is it?
I can make just one comment, one is we try to keep the lowest possible rates to our customers. We basically take the entire system, all the maintenance costs, everything else that's associated with it, power supply cost, to get to the lowest possible cost for all of our customers. That's very different than the investor-owned utilities.
So you're saying
Investor-owned utilities are traded on the stock exchanges and they do have profit, like you've just described. They have profit targets for the bottom line and they pay their chairman's nine million dollars a year. And they, it's just amazing.
So is the metric, the kilowatt, the price per kilowatt hour that you charge ratepayers? Is that how everybody is evaluated in the industry?
Can I just speak for a second? So we have a number of different metrics, you've been here for other meetings, so Hamed gives the metric on reliability.
Yeah, sure, that would be one metric, but is there a financial metric?
Right, so then there's a financial metric of rate comparisons.
So it is the price per kilowatt hour?
Rates per kilowatt hour.
Okay.
For all classes, residential, commercial, everybody. And then you have another metric, I'm sorry, which is what Chuck was talking about, which is your operating ratio.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So, we're about seventy-eight, twenty-two, I think, or something in that range, which is looked as being a very good operating ratio by the American Public Power Association. So there are a number of metrics that we try to go through when we're giving our presentations. It isn't just one.
The thing about is that every geographic area is different in terms of the characteristics of the customers, how far apart buildings are, which means more plant has to be maintained for this, less revenue. So these are, I would, correct me if I'm wrong, is these are just kind of order of magnitude measurements. You can't say, well, because Reading's this and, you know, Holden is that, or, you know.
Yeah, Reading is very unique because we've got four towns in the district. The study I think APP did is we're the only, the only, the only district in the nation that has four towns in the district.
The, if I can add one more as well, the so all municipals are also looked at for their classification load. So for example, for the Reading territory, eighty percent of our customers are residents, but it represents twenty percent of the load.
Okay.
And twenty percent of our customers are commercial industrial, but represent eighty percent of the load. So that in itself is a metric. So when you look at like the APPA statistics, they'll go through by revenue class, by kilowatt hour sales, and they have to do it on each one in order for people not to try to say, okay, it's apples to apples to apples to apples because it's not. So it's kind of a combination is what I'm saying, depending on what, what metric you're trying to compare.
Isn't another one that we can only make eight percent more than our costs? Under chapter one sixty-four that
That's an allowed cap on the return.
That's eight percent of net plant.
A net plant.
And that's a legislative
Eighty-five, eighty-five, one twenty-one.
And that's only, that's not on power supply. Power supply is a pass through. So when Chuck says we saved on capacity, we don't have an extra million dollars. That has to go back to the customer, there's no profit made on any power supply. It's a, it's a one for one, and that's another part of the law.
As a metric, aren't we characterized as a not-for-profit corporation?
We are.
Not a nonprofit, but a not-for-profit.
That means they can pay you like nine million bucks.
We would love to pay for nine million bucks.
You know, the PBD Light Plant Board of Commissioners, they actually, they get paid and they get health benefits, okay?
All in favor?
You know what?
I'm sorry, it's not a quick question and I already wish I had
But it's a very good question, actually.
Well, you've heard a number of facets to it. But the one thing that I try to assess when I look at what's going on is overall risk. What's the risk of volatility in rates? What's the risk of running out of cash? What are the risks of losing load?
Risk of infrastructure failing because it hasn't been maintained.
So the thing that I look at is enterprise risk management, ERM. And I would go through and assess all of those factors.
But that's not a metric. But that's a great thing.
It is a metric, and if people wanna be like us, they will, well, they will define
But it's important.
It is the measure of when somebody wants to be like us. They wanna be nice, stable, low-risk, customers happy with the service. But it all gets shaped around that risk parameter.
Yeah, no, it fits in our customer satisfaction metric and reliability metric.
Okay, thank you.
Phil has yet another metric to share with you Karen.
Just to pat ourselves on the back.
She doesn't want any more metrics.
Reading is seen as a leader. We are seen as a leader.
That's not a metric.
People copy us.
Yes, it is, number one, number one.
People copy us.
You were really good Karen.
Metropolitan Area Plant Commission told me he really liked your shred the peak and the giant battery that you did.
See?
He said you're doing some good stuff. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming to our meeting soon.
So, next meeting, so the twentieth, actually, John and I both have, turns out we have, we can't be there on the twentieth. And we just discussed that the select board might wanna have a joint meeting with us, so given though, I think we all said that's fine, I certainly am up for it. Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. That, could we maybe try to have that meeting earlier in February? Or is that, like, what would be some dates that you all could, at least, what would be some dates earlier in February that you guys could do? Let me look at my calendar. Sorry, I don't wanna have
Let me suggest that we send everything to Tracy in terms of dates that we could do.
Okay.
And she can recirculate those as a possible.
Sure.
Are they dates for the board meeting or dates for the
Well, but it could end up being the same meeting, right? Because there could be a piece of it where they come and there's a joint meeting and then we have that, but then we carry on with whatever our meeting would have been.
So Mr. Chairman, just, you know, I think at our last meeting, we sent out the options to the CAB for
Yeah, I know.
Evaluation.
Correct.
I don't think we should meet with this board of selectmen until we have input back from the CAB.
Well, but I mean, one doesn't have to happen before
No, I think, no, no, I think we need to have something back to the CAB first.
Yeah, I agree.
Before we have a meeting with
Well, is that, George, is there a, was there a calendar for that?
I don't agree with that, actually.
The twentieth.
Yeah, but why, it doesn't have to be sequential. I don't, I don't know why that has to happen. Yeah, why does it have to be sequential? If they wanna
We need to get their input.
Well, we need both of their inputs.
Yeah.
But I don't think, I don't think a meeting with the select board is, has to happen. It doesn't matter, either way.
I think it does matter.
Can I say something? I thought we said earlier that the CAB is the third leg to the meeting.
That's right.
So why, why not just have the CAB come to the meeting and everyone gets to hear everything?
Sure, that's a great idea. We could, yeah, all three boards
Of course it's hard to coordinate fifteen people's calendars.
The thing is, Phil, the reason I'm racking the way I'm racking is because we would not be taking any action at that meeting. Of course, we're waiting for the CAB before we take any action.
Makes no sense even to meet, but that's a whole different argument, you know? If we're not taking any action, why even bother to meet?
Well, because they wanna, they wanna have a joint meeting and we all love each other and we wanna have a big meeting and talk about things. Why are you shaking your head?
I disagree. I agree with Phil, I think we should get the data in from internal to our own organization first. So we have a good sense about where we stand. And then we meet with them and we can go back and forth and discuss whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent.
So you think we should, we should hear from the CAB first?
I do, I do.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Chair? I guess I would land on that, only in the, we know this has been a long process for lots of reasons, but the input from the CAB will minimize, because we could have good discussions with the town and then subsequently get feedback from the CAB, which could require it to be a much more iterative process. And I'm not saying that we're only gonna have one, only forever meeting with town, but I think if we can position it so we have the CAB input, I think that that puts us in a better position of at least having more information when we talk to the town. The town is, I mean, it's clear that they have big concerns and we need to listen to them, but what comes out of the CAB, you know, is important for us to hear too. So I think knowing that would make the meeting more productive. We could meet without it, but I think it'd be a more productive meeting if we have the CAB's input, that would be my view.
It's called getting your own house in order first, and then moving forward.
Well, I mean, just hypothetically, if the CAB had raised a huge concern and that, and we have to go back to the town and say, I know we, I know we came this close to, you know, coming to an understanding, but guess what?
There's no rush on this.
No, I mean, I'm not rushing it. Who's rushing? I'm not rushing.
Okay, you're not rushing?
No, I'm just trying, I'm trying to schedule a meeting is what I'm trying to do.
March, let's do March.
So why don't we go the next week after the twentieth? We could do that.
Okay. Fine, I'm fine with that. I think the issue was, you can't be here the, that next week.
Nor you.
No, actually, the next week I'm good. Yeah, so it's the one after, you can't, but I could.
That's correct.
You're talking about the twenty-seventh?
The only thing I can do is call in, maybe.
If you're okay with that, then I'm okay with like the twenty-seventh.
I, I'm not sure, just the technology and not no criticism to RMLD, but that, you know, if we had video conferencing or something, I get it. But calling, calling in is you don't know who's speaking, you talk over each other, I think it's
Let's send our dates to Tracy and we have all, everything in alignment with everyone, let's choose a date.
Is there a date, forget which meeting we have, but is there a date in February when everyone can meet? I guess that's the question.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, but there's, I mean, because the twentieth is the earliest we're gonna have the CAB feedback.
Well, actually, let's ask George, is the twentieth the earliest you guys can meet? I know we skipped January entirely for you, right?
I have quite a bunch of things going on in February myself that is our budgetary time. So I won't speak for everybody else.
Yeah.
Plus I'm going away too.
So you guys are still meeting here, you're meeting here on the twentieth?
Correct.
Okay. I'm supposed to go to that CAB meeting, and it's five thirty, right? You guys are meeting early?
At this time, yeah. George, I don't mean to put you to the spot, but I'll ask anyway, so without saying why, but I mean, do you, do you have a preference? Do you think it's advantageous for us in terms of, you understand the overall processes? Is it better for us to have the CAB input, do you think? I would think so. I think it makes perfect sense. It's John's to get your house in order. Have everybody's input.
Okay, I agree with that then. I mean, we have a house that includes, well, anyway. I mean, either way, we could have a CAB, a select board, another CAB, another select board, another RMLD. We could keep doing this, and every three weeks we could have joint meetings with every board.
No, we're not gonna do that.
You know, we have this, well, we still have the select board.
We'll not ever do that.
Okay, I'm a little tired right now, so.
Can we go move on?
Yeah, let's, we'll move into the scheduling, I guess, offline.
Is there anything else listed here that Is there anything else listed here that, uh?
So it sounds like, uh, may I speak for a second?
Please.
So it sounds like my first assignment goal to you, but you failed.
Yes, we did. Which is to.
Set the agenda.
In an expedition.
You know, set the agenda for next meeting.
So, may I make some suggestions?
Please.
For whatever date that we're gonna meet?
Yes.
Topical themes, shall we say?
Yeah, so, how about we discuss the REX?
Right.
So that everybody's on the same page about how that works.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Is that, are we gonna suggest, cause I mean, three?
We have an in-house expert.
Well, three are the goals, three are the goal of people that will renewable energy.
Serious. Yep. So the REX would be right in line for that.
The rest at the next, I get a presentation on the REX at the next meeting.
Sure.
As our, as our, under procedures, um, setting the agenda.
Yep.
Is there a discussion?
We just have to make sure that Chuck's gonna be here for whatever meeting.
Maybe that's the March meeting.
He said he'd fly back. Hello.
Alright.
Did we wanna have the?
So renew, so a presentation on renewable, where we are.
Right.
A presentation on REX and how that works and where we are.
Right, that sounds good, that sounds good. What about, Chair? Chair? I agree with that.
Okay.
Did we wanna continue the discussion on goals, cause it seems like there's more.
Yes, we, I'm gonna, we discussed that I would edit this offline, send it to Colleen.
So that would be a topic for the next meeting?
Yes, and then that will be hopefully a f- final document that we can vote in.
Final answer.
So, can we move Tracy? Okay, good, thank you.
And what about the whole, um, can I ask one more, oh, sorry, can I ask one more question? What about our finalizing of the new, um, GM evaluation process? Where are we on that? I just wanted. Why, why, in the spirit of what, how we're gonna handle this, why don't you sit down with Colleen and sharpen it up? Tom, will you come with me? As an expert in HR? If that doesn't violate open meetings, have the two of them meet with you and then, um, come back with something for us to vote.
Forum, so it should be okay.
Is that okay? Yeah, okay, that sounds like a good. So we'll have you, that'll get worked out and we'll vote on it next meeting. Alright, okay.
I'm ready for the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Nicely done, Chair.
Okay, um, yeah, okay.
Alright, moved that the board of commissioners go on executive session to consider the purchase of real estate and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.